All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our continued session from last week's regular meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order. First item up is public hearing on the recommended fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Just to give a little history, on the budget this year, we received the initial budget presentation from our county manager Derrick Rowland on May 15th. At that point, we knew we were going to have some considerations with the Board of Education and our education system in general. So the liaisons had a meeting with the Board of Education on May 23rd. Is that correct? It's Rowland who was May 23rd?
That's right.
Okay. And then we had a budget work session with you on June 5th, and then we took some public comment on June 12th, and then tonight, a week later, we're having our public hearing. So those are the public meetings that we've had to discuss the budget. At our last meeting, we had several, which would have been the June 5th meeting, we had several items arise considering potential changes to the county manager's recommended budget. One of those was being some additions from our liaison committee that they suggested for education. The other one was considerations having to do with the consequences of health insurance and a 2% COLA for the employees. We also had a few other items. So I think from that, county manager has made some revisions. So before we receive any public comment, which I don't have anybody signed up for it this morning, I'm going to turn it over to our county manager and let him give us a quick presentation on the changes that him and his staff have made for our discussion tonight. So Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. As the chairman alluded to, following the meeting on June 5th, 2018, where we presented the proposed budget for fiscal year 19, the two main themes or main concerns that came from that meeting were education funding and the impact that the increase in health insurance cost would have on the county employees. Let's start with the school system. The liaison committee had recommended on June 5th, 2018, to increase the operating funds to the Macon County school system by half a million dollars and to increase the capital outlay to the Macon County school system by $250,000. And as we talked at that time, this $250,000 that was going toward capital would be to make safety-related improvements. The half a million increase in revenue that was going into operations was, of course, to offset the proposed cuts that Dr. Baldwin had presented in the event that this half a million dollars was not appropriated to the school system. As directed by the Board, Dr. Baldwin and Finance Officer Angie Cook, along with myself and Finance Director Lori Hall, sat down and we again went over these projected shortcuts and went over the liaison committee's recommendation of the $750,000 total increase to the school system's budget. We came to the conclusion that the liaison committee recommendation as presented on June 5th, 2018, would satisfy the fiscal year 19 needs of the Macon County school system. Thus, the revision to the budget that you have in front of you gives the school system that $750,000, and it is in the form of an appropriation from fund balance. Again, that's half a million dollars to operations and $250,000 going toward those safety-related capital improvements. As previously discussed, at our June 5th meeting, the sustainability of taking operating from fund balance. We all agree that is not something that is sustainable, that is not something you can do ongoing as a revenue source for the recurring expenditures. This was something that Lori and myself discussed with Dr. Baldwin and Ms. Cook at our meeting, and we came to the conclusion that during this fiscal year, we're going to look closely at funding from the local level as well as funding from the state level to potentially look for any increases in state funding that could alleviate the need for local funding in certain areas. We also have to keep in mind that sales tax continues to increase. Through March, our latest numbers, again, we were in arrears on those sales tax projections, but through March, it's a total increase of 6% in this year, and we had budgeted 2%, if you will recall. So as the economy, we hope, continues to improve and these sales tax collections continue to increase, in the future, that can serve as a source of recurring revenue which could potentially help to offset these costs into the next fiscal year. In addition to that, with the revaluation coming up, any increases in the tax base during that revaluation will result in growth to add the lower tax revenue. Again, that's recurring money. That is not a tax increase, that is, again, a growth in the tax base. Where, and you know, as Richard and I have spoken, you know, that's not, it's not going to be a substantial amount, but there will be some growth there as this revaluation takes place that serves as a potential source for ongoing revenue. And last, but not least, we're going to each continue to search for savings brought about within each of our budgets through increased efficiencies. And by doing that, of course, increasing efficiencies hopefully will result in reducing expenditures. So we're going to keep an eye on all those things as we move in, go through this fiscal year and move into fiscal year 20 budget to, again, be able to sustain this increase, this operating increase with operating revenue. In terms of the impact of health insurance, we have discussed this at each of our work sessions when we've gotten together. The increases we received that had to be passed down to the employees, specifically those with dependents, were significant following our health insurance renewal. I am happy to say that going back through the budget, we are, we think we have made the adjustments within the existing budget, within the parameters of our existing operating budget, which will enable us to give Macon County employees a 2% cost of living adjustment in the coming fiscal year. How we were able to do this, if you'll remember, in the recommended budget, the board's contracted services line item had $100,000 in it, which was going to go toward broadband expansion in Macon County. This $100,000 in the recommended budget was funded from general fund revenue. When we look back, we have an economic development fund, which was established by resolution in 2000. That fund had about $1.1 million in it. So instead of using general fund revenue for that $100,000, we moved that money from that economic development capital reserve fund into the operating budget, which freed up that $100,000 in expenditures. In addition to that, from the economic development fund, we moved $300,000 additional dollars into that contracted services line item in the Board of Commissioners budget. As Commissioner Gillespie had, the chairman had alluded to at the last meeting, any, you know, email the county manager with any recommendations, any changes that you foresee coming, that you would like to see in the following year's budget. But that happened to be one that Commissioner Gillespie had emailed me previously, and we had to also discuss this last year, and it makes perfect sense with the efforts that the broadband committee continues to put into broadband expansion in Macon County. We're seeing some movement at the state level this year, increasing funding for broadband expansion. So, you know, by us, by us having that $100,000 in there for consultative services plus an additional $300,000 for any pilot projects or opportunities that pilot project, opportunities for pilot projects that might arise, similar to the state, we are showing our commitment by stepping up there with broadband expansion and that we are committed to seeing that happen here in Macon County. $42,000 in additional revenue was generated, you have that in your packet, by adjusting the ambulance rates from 150% of Medicare allowable to 200% of Medicare allowable. In addition to generating $42,000 in additional revenue, what that also does is that puts us closer, as you will see, there's a comparison in here to our surrounding counties, that puts us closer in line with the rates we're seeing in surrounding counties, and it also takes the financial burden of the EMS service off of the taxpayer and onto the service recipient. So it's kind of a twofold thing there, that, you know, Mr. Cave had came to me with that recommendation, and we went ahead and put it in there. There was $40,976, which came from a reduction in expenditures within the EMS budget following staffing adjustments, which Mr. Cave had also came and recommended to me. That will mainly come from the overtime budget, that reduction in expenditures will, and again, that is from staffing adjustments and some adjustments he has made with his shift and the supervisors of those shifts. $40,254 came in a reduction, as a reduction in expenditures from the sheriff's budget. The sheriff had came to me with the recommendation to eliminate some of the equipment within his budget that was previously, that we had in the recommended budget, that was budgeted at $40,254. Lastly, the contribution to the health insurance reserve fund, as you will recall, that was up above about $285,000 originally in the recommended budget. We reduced that contribution to the health insurance reserve fund by $177,043, and all these things that I have just listed total up to $40273, which is the cost needed to provide a 2% cost of living increase to the county employees. Again, this comes with no use of fund balance, and most importantly, it does not compromise our service provision. And one of the, one of the things that I have to say here is, the things that we saw in this with the sheriff and Warren coming to us with these recommendations say a lot about county government and how we operate here. And, you know, without the continual sacrifice of these department heads and employees on a daily basis to do their job and to be sure that we're doing our job well, we couldn't operate. And the employees, as I've said time and time again, or we couldn't turn the lights on here without the employees. They're the most, they're the most important part of this organization, and each and every one of them does a great job, and I'm proud to be a Macon County employee and work alongside of these individuals every day. And I would just like to, again, publicly thank them for helping us come up with these recommendations and helping us to find this money to provide a 2% cost of living adjustment, which will hopefully go towards offsetting the majority of increases brought about by the increase in health insurance premiums. And with that being said, Mr. Chairman, that, you can see here the second sheet in your agenda packet, and I have agenda packets here as well for the media. I'll lay them, lay them over here so you guys can look along. You'll see on the revenue side, that $42,000, the ambulance fees that we discussed going from 150 to 200%. You'll see the $400,000 transfer from the economic development capital reserve fund, which again, went into the governing board's contracted services line item. You'll see the $750,000 appropriation from fund balance, which will go toward the operating and capital needs of the school system. This is a total of $1,192,000. When added to the original budget amount of $49,837,009, you get a total revised budget new amount of $51,029,009. Look over to the expenditure side, the governing board increased by $300,000 in that contracted services line item. You'll see the expenditures for EMS reduced by $40,976,000, which are discussed. You'll see the expenditures for the sheriff reduced by $40,254. You will see expenditures increase to education by $750,000, and you will see the transfer to the health insurance reserve fund, again, decrease by $177,043. The cost of the COLA, $40273, that is $1.192 million addition in expenditures to match the increase in revenue, which leaves the new revised budget amount at $51,029,09.
Thank you. Any questions from county manager?
All right, appreciate it. Y'all working on this. I like to do reasonable budget. I think y'all spend, what, about four or five months each year spending with department heads and I compliment the staff there. You have an orientation for staffs and all department heads, and everybody works on this budget, and it's a tight budget, you know, and we have to take account of the fact that it's taxpayer dollars. Last year, we funded, I may be out of order here, but last year, we funded the fire task force. I had a few reservations about that, but I have to tell you, I had to warn the fire task force and each individual fire department for the reduction in your ratings. That's the first time that's happened in years across the board. That's a great return on that investment of taxpayer dollars and a compliment to Warren and each, certainly all of your staff and each fire department. Proud of it.
Definitely. That was, that was huge.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Board. All right, I didn't have anybody signed up to speak, but anybody like to address the Board in regards to the budget? Sure. Come on, Karen.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I had made a request for a one-time, non-recurring increase to implement improved broadband Wi-Fi capability at two of our branch libraries, at the Nantahala Community Library and at the Hudson Library. I had submitted that to Derrick and I had, I know that Paul and Jimmy would be impacted because of the communities that that would serve in Nantahala and in Highlands for the improvement. We provide internet access at our libraries at a very economical cost through the E-Rate discount program that's available to schools and libraries. That brings us about 80% discounts on the broadband costs that we have to pay. We learned recently from Botham West that there were new connections available to the communities in Highlands and in Nantahala that could allow us to improve the Wi-Fi connectivity there. We'll double the speed at the Hudson Library and we'll provide seven times the speed at Nantahala. It's not really saying a whole lot, we're still only at 15 meg each for those connections, but it's certainly an improvement over what we have now. But because we were not able to submit our applications for the E-Rate discount program, those costs are not covered by that 80% discount. So our request is to be able to install the improved connectivity for our Wi-Fi at those two libraries, to pay for the service that is not discounted this year because we were not able to qualify for E-Rate this year, this coming fiscal year, and the improvement of the switch equipment that helps provide those internet connections. So the total cost was?
$5,072, I believe.
Yeah, $5,072. And I know Carl had had some questions for me about a couple of hours ago, so.
Just bringing it to speed, we, I brought this to the Board's attention at last Tuesday's meeting, and we discussed it, and we basically, this Board tasked Carl with getting with you to get a little bit more information on that, and we decided that it was such a minimal amount overall that, presuming that's sort of his expertise, that, and y'all got together on your terms, that we would probably just pull it out of contingency moving forward in this year. So I think he's just going to get with you, and we'll probably discuss that at our July, July meeting.
Okay, so we would need to delay.
County, you don't have a deadline on this, do you?
No, not a deadline, just it's a busy time in our libraries right now, and so we'd like to improve the service as soon as we can, because we're at maximum capacity right now with the summer.
If we do it out of contingency in this, before the end of this month, it will, Lori already has her end of.
Already finalized the ordinance last week.
Yeah, so.
Yes, so it would have to be out of next fiscal year.
It would be out of the contingency.
And, you know, quite honestly, I don't know when we could get on their schedule to install, but the sooner we can do it, the better the service that we can.
You have to pay upfront?
I'm sorry?
You can't get on the schedule without paying?
Not unless I know the money is coming.
Tell them you think it is.
And then when the bill comes.
Tell them to wash dishes.
Just to, to the Board, we have had some correspondence back and forth. I had some additional questions that you have responded back to, and I haven't had opportunity to read, so we might, we might have a recommendation ready.
So we'll be good by July?
Great. Well, I appreciate the consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
All minds clear on the budget? Any other changes, any other recommendations? Mr. Shields, any comments?
No, sir. We, I'd like to just thank, I know that liaison committee, we tried not to bring anything in at the last hour, but the clock was ticking, and we know that it was a lot of work, and I appreciate this Board's consideration along with the school board's consideration and the work by, by not only Dr. Baldwin, but Lori, it falls on her lap a lot of it, so, and Ms. Cook, so we appreciate the work that they did on this and them following up on it to make sure that, Richard Shields and myself was not making it just a shot in the dark here, so we appreciate the work that was done.
Mr. Blatt speaks, Mr. Headman. Go ahead, Carl, you're ready. I can see it.
I don't know if I'm ready, but, you know, in regards to the budget, generally speaking, Derrick and staff, Lori, everyone that worked on that, y'all obviously put a lot of time and effort in it. You're trying to make a dollar go as far as you can, and I think everybody here appreciates that, but more importantly, the taxpayers appreciate that, so a huge thank you to two of them. One item in particular in the budget, I guess I'm going to pick on a little bit, is in regards to education. And the liaisons have done a great job working with the school board, administration of the school board, and I don't want to know how many hours have been spent, but a huge thank you to everyone involved in that. But one in particular item is, is the ongoing funding of keeping our technology current. And it's, I view that a little differently, maybe even some, and to me, that's kind of like the power wheel, filling the gas tank up with gas in the car and fuel up so the furnace will come out. And I talked to Andy Muncy about what their expectation was at the county in regards to how often devices should be replaced, and Andy indicated that the county is on a five-year term, and that's what the school system has requested to be on. And there's certainly been a significant increase from where we started in funding the school system, but I think we're still sure of where we need to be there in regards to keeping that on a five-year term. So I would like to see us address that in this budget. I know there's been a huge amount of effort to get where we're at in the budget, but I think if we can do that, we're not going to get it on a five-year term, but in five years, if we continue to fund it, then we'll be on a five-year term. So we're not, we're not catching everything up by putting $300,000 more in it to get to the $600 that we requested, but we are making an effort, and then over a five-year period, if we continue to do that, then we'll end up being at what a lot of folks believe is the industry standard for replacing. You know, these, these devices are going in the hands that folks is going to be taking care of all of us, as we made today. But, you know, we've got to, we've got to get them as current a technology as we can, because irregardless of what field they go in, what they're going to do, they're going to have to have those skills. And I think it's really important that we address that, and I would, I would request that we fund that at the $600.
So I, based upon what you're saying there, I can't disagree with what you're saying. So your, your request and what you're saying is we need to increase the IT capital layout for the schools by, I heard two numbers there, $300,000 and $600,000. You suggest we increase it by 300?
To make a total of 600.
To make a total of 600. Okay. So the outlay for education would go from 9.589 to 9.889? That's the way I gather that? Correct?
What does it stay? What does it, how do they, what, what do?
The total education at that point would go to an additional $1,500,000.
$1,500,000. Right. But it would take, I'm just looking at the total amount on the front page of the budget ordinance.
Well, if, if, you know, we could also, the, we have a school board or a school system capital projects fund, Fund 46, that has money specifically set aside for school system capital expenditures, such as the one we're discussing here today. We could also, the other way we could do it, and Lori can certainly speak to it, is to appropriate it from that fund into the education budget rather than putting it in the operating budget. We can move the $300,000 from that fund into the budget as opposed to general fund.
It stays within the fund?
Yeah.
You would appropriate $300,000 fund balance in Fund 46 and then set up a technology line item?
Inside.
Inside Fund 46, that way you're not.
Earmark the line.
Same thing, the same.
Same difference.
Same thing.
If the money is just not present in the federal fund or to keep checking at higher level, but.
But would we then, but this is recurring money, right, Carl? I mean, you're, you're looking for $600.
And they're giving the mindset, as long as we don't light them, then that's kind of the same rule.
And you and Tim have certainly had this conversation.
Our solution would just be for one year, then we'll have to figure out next year.
And we could do it like.
With the additional $300,000.
And just like we're doing with the, with the $750, just monitor it and look for potential savings in the. savings and expenditures and potential increases in revenue that can help offset it in fiscal year 20, and we'll begin having those discussions this fiscal, coming fiscal year in January.
Now, is that via six months of you?
How much is currently in that?
Eight forty-eight, seven forty-two. Eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. Which, we'll talk about part of that as we're starting to make a little bit.
Okay, now, let me get this in my head. The 300,000, we're going to put in the capital outlay, an additional 300,000 for IT for Macon County School, is that right? That'll equal, you combine that with the other 300,000, it's in there at 600,000. But, and I did not just hear you say that's for this year, it's not recurring?
The additional 300,000 would be for this year. That would be a one-time solution that going forward and in the next fiscal year, part of the budget process is going to be finding the additional revenue if the board desires to keep up after we've monitored it, looked at it for six months, seeing what kind of headway we're making. If the board, if the board decides that we're going to continue going in that direction, then as part of the budget process, we'll look for that recurring revenue in fiscal year 20.
What does the state, how does the state fund your technology, Andy?
We get, from the state, we get about 50, 60,000 bucks a year from...
Yeah, we get, we get an ADM allotment of about 16,000 or something like that, and then fines and forfeitures that go for technology. So, the total state contribution to our technology IT budget is about, oh, about 50 or 60,000 dollars a year, and that's about it.
Have you moved it into a motion, or is that, or is that, who are we here to make this a, finalize what you're requesting?
Either, either way, y'all want appropriate money, it's okay. Me, I, I think I would be inclined to pull the other 300 out of fund balance, and let's go ahead and just kind of decide tonight that we're going to start funding this thing at the level that's requested.
One of the, the fund balances is going to be sustained more than a final amount.
Absolutely, it's not. Nothing pulling that whole million something out of it, absolutely not.
Too much capital.
But, but it's, it's like the county manager may be wanting to me, keep paying the power bill, having a savings account, and I agree with that, but you probably wouldn't want it around in the dark either, so, so I agree with what you're saying.
What's easiest, Lori, as far as the bookwork at this point?
At this point, the Fund 46 option.
It's easiest, it's the simplest to do, at this point right now.
As for the 300,000 that go up to the school at this time?
And again, it's... We're going to have to tackle one with the other if it's out of fund balance.
Six, twelve, half a dozen each.
Do we need to handle that as part of a motion, or as separate motion?
Yeah, that would need to be in a, I think we would need to, if we're going to do it out of Fund 46, and we're going to approve the budget, I think we would first need to approve the budget, and then we would need to approve the capital project ordinance that would entail moving 300, or having a fund set up within Fund 46 for 300,000 dollars.
And that would say having to go all the way back through?
Yes, and redo all the...
You can figure out, I mean, you're the gullible.
Yeah, that's fine with...
Actually, well, Mr. Burrow, he's the guru here.
Mr. Burrow, why don't you come up here just a sec?
All right.
Since you're going to be loaded down with money, come on up.
So, this, the way we understand Mr. Gillespie's, what we're going to do is, he's proposing to double what the county, you know, we borrowed 1.5 million dollars five years ago. Just remind everybody how that works, as best my memory, and the payment was 300,000 dollars a year, and we decided after that was paid off to continue with the 300,000, is that correct? We continue making that, that's part of the budget from here on, and we agreed to continue that from now on. So, what Commissioner Gillespie's saying is that, in his opinion, and I don't, and I certainly don't disagree, to get it started to, and I think at that time, that has been five years to, to, what does it, I know then it was 1.5 million, and that got us started, and it seemed like there was a grant came along with that.
Well, that kind of got us caught up for the previous years of not having much capital outlay funding for technology. It costs us about 618,000 dollars a year to keep every, it would cost us that, to keep everything on a five-year rotation, keep the oldest computers at five years old. Currently, we're only 10 or 12 years old. We've got computers that are 10 and 12 years old sitting in the classroom that they don't even use because they're not usable in most situations. So, this is just to keep what we've got current, it's no expansion, it's just to keep...
The rotation.
Yeah, it's exactly what it is.
What about the tablets that the students have?
Those, those are funded in part by what you all funded at one time, and then we got some money from the state, a one-time allotment for the state, to help buy those tablets for our one-to-one in a high school, and that's, that's part of the cost. I mean, those things last about, about five years, and that's about how you get out of them. What we've been doing is buying as many as we can and handing those down to lower grade levels that don't have so much requirements as the high school, and that's, that's to keep those going as well.
Do you need to have the budget on?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're kind of backing up, yeah. It, it would really help to have that as a, almost a current expense item every year because it is a recurring expense every year. I know it's a capital item, but it is.
What was the last increase you had from the state, Tim?
Uh, we, our, our state has been decreasing. We used to get about 130,000 dollars. Well, yeah. And about five years ago, they started cutting our IP budget, our O-15 budget, so we're just kind of having to deal with that. And there, those things have to be used on classroom items, they can't be used on other IT things like switches and stuff at the central office that has to be used in the classroom, that state money.
See, I don't want to, I think we're doing a Band-Aid job with one year. I think it's a Band-Aid. But I think I heard in this conversation, though, that we're going to be serious about, look at this, to get it on a, more than just a Band-Aid. And if we're not serious about that, we're just playing jerk around. So, I think what I hear Mr. Gillespie saying is he would like to see that 600,000 for the next five years, not, not Band-Aid, 600, or 300 additional this year, and then blah, blah, blah.
In other words, we'll see it again next year.
Yeah, but the cleanest shirt at this time may be the 300,000 dollars additional and pray over this for a year, is that what we're doing?
Well, just the simplest way to get the money.
Yeah, and that's, what is it, 46? What was the, what, Fund 46?
Fund 46.
Fund 46.
School capital project fund. Anytime we build schools, add on to schools, those pocket things, there's usually money set aside, and it's just...
We're going to hit it again right here in a minute, I think.
Yeah, so...
Mr. Gillespie, would you, would you be okay to, I agree with you, I think it's a Band-Aid, but also, I think we need to make a good faith effort to go back and look at what you're, get out of the Band-Aid business and get into replacing these. I was on the school board when we did the 1.5.
Right, right.
And that was really a shot in the arm, but I believe we were seven years behind, or eight years?
We were at that point, yeah.
Yeah.
That got us caught up, and now we're kind of back to the same place.
They were getting back there again, the same place. Whatever motion you hear to get you an additional 300,000 dollars.
So, you need to approve the budget for it?
We'll approve the budget. I've already made an addition to the agenda. We're going to handle this, Fund 46, 300K for IT, as item 4A on our agenda.
I hope this good faith effort will, will continue and keep replenishing what your needs are.
I appreciate it, Mark.
Because that's for the kids, that's why it's all for.
It is.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Thank you.
Commissioner, anyone else would like to address the board about the 1819 budget? No commissioners? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing on the 2018-19 budget. I'm going to open the public hearing on the proposed 2019 schedule of values. Does anyone like to address the board regarding the 472 and a half pages? Just kidding, I don't know, that was a guess.
Pretty close.
How many pages?
About 118.
I was a little, I exaggerated slightly. Anyone, any commissioners have any questions on that? Mr. Manager? Going once, going twice?
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
I had a question from a couple commissioners. Basically, this is the rulebook. You know, anytime you go in the game, you got a set of rules. Well, the tax commission and the courts look at this book that we adopt, it's two schedules. The first part's residential, commercial, and land, the back part is you use value. So, if it's not in this book, then every case we have going to Raleigh forward, they'll pull this, and they'll read it, and they'll decide our case by the rulebook. Hasn't changed much, except some numbers on cost construction, things like that, but I'm just clarifying that for the board and knowing what this is.
Just speak on behalf of our tax office, Mr. Chairman. The rulebooks held up pretty well over the years, and we should be very proud of our tax office and the job that they've done over the years. You can look at their track record, and their rulebook's done pretty well.
I think we have to tip our hat, hat to Kevin back there, too, who's trying to hide. Kevin, appreciate what you do.
Yeah. Mr. Manager, before I close out, do we need to approve that schedule of values tonight? Or will that be, or will we approve it?
We will approve this at your next meeting in July.
In July, okay.
And we advertise it for four weeks, and then, you know, that, going on that four weeks, then they appeal to Raleigh.
Okay.
July is when you will make a motion to have this...
Anyone else like to address the board? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on the, the public hearing on the proposed 2019 schedule of values. Next item on the agenda, recognition of a sheriff department officer, Commissioner Bill.
Yes, sir. This is another prideful moment from Macon County. Detective Dana Burris was presented with the North Carolina Juvenile Officer of the Year Award for 2018. So, I'm going to read some of the things we put together, but Detective Burris, if you'll please come up. First of all, what a beautiful award, and they just don't hand these out. And I want to read what was presented, that was written to them. First of all, Detective Burris had been with the Macon Sheriff's Department for about 12 years. She started out as a detention officer. Glad you got ahead of that. Went on as a road deputy, then a school resource officer, and now as juvenile investigator. And on June the 14th, is that right? Yeah. The award named LT Williams Award is presented annually to the outstanding juvenile officer of the year, and has been presented for over 30 years. The recipient is selected by the association's nominated committee. In order to receive this award, the officer shall have exhibited outstanding ability and performance of his or her duties in keeping the professional standards of law enforcement. The officer has made some contribution to the advancement of the juvenile officer profession. The personal conduct was beyond reproach and has set an example for other citizens, and the officer should be active in civic and community fire. Now, this is the fifth recipient over the year, over the 30 years of Macon County, but we're so proud of you and how you represent Macon County. And we talk about budgets and everything, but it's really the people that make up Macon County weird. It's kind of big for this board and the people in this room. We're very proud of you, and thank you for representing Macon County so well, and especially what you do to help our juvenile. Thank you so much.
Sure, if you'd like to do that, please do.
These ladies that work these cases, these are the cases that you take home every night before you go to sleep, you're still thinking about them, and when you wake up, you're still thinking about those cases, and that's crimes against children. So, I also want to say thank you. These ladies make me look good all the time. They, they work so hard, and they care so much about the children that they are representing and taking care of them. And in front of everybody, I just want you to know, Mary, I appreciate you, everybody. I'm not shaking, I'm going to be good.
And by the way, you know, we talked about spouses, there's also a spouse at home, too, that is not always the wife at home. Sometimes there's a husband at home who deserves just as much as applause, and they, they too. When these officers come home, they have to have a spouse that supports them also, so thank you too, we appreciate it.
Triple repay.
You have to use up another car.
All right, great. Next item on the agenda, discussion, consideration regarding adoption of the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget ordinance. I think we just went through the majority of that. I'm personally going to vote in favor of this budget. I know the effort that our staff has put into it, and if you'll remember, back when we first started this, back in May, actually, probably even before that, I guess it was April when we first started talking about our priorities for the budget, I may mention that I wanted to see our, the increase in funding for education systems. We saw the issues that they were having on several different levels, and I'm happy to see that, hopefully, this board will, will vote in favor of pushing this forward. I don't think it answers every problem, but at least we're, I feel good about it. I feel a lot better about it, let me just put it that way. So, I'm in favor of the budget. Again, Mr. County Manager, Finance Officer, I'd like to thank both y'all for your work. Warren Sheriff, thank y'all for your considerations in trying to help this call up, come, come back, which was another one of my issues after receiving County Manager's recommendations. So, thank y'all for that. So, with that being said, would anybody else like to speak? If not, the chair will entertain a motion on approving the 2018-2019 budget ordinance.
I make a motion to be approved with the addition of the 46.
So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget ordinance? I'll say it. We have a second from Commissioner Gillespie. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Yes, sir. Last year, when it came time to approve the budget, I didn't, I didn't support the budget. The reason I didn't was because I went, before I came to meeting, I read through the things that were important to me, that I told the citizens that I would work on as a commissioner. And the budget, I didn't feel like met those expectations. This year, I had a conversation with the county manager and asked him as nicely as I could to, to address some of those issues. Before I left the office, I read that same list, the things that I committed to do, and while I'm not 100% happy with the budget, I can say, we're going to shackle it out, that I can stand before the citizens of Macon County and say that this budget meets those things. And Derek, I appreciate that, I appreciate you doing that, and I would absolutely support this budget. Thank you.
I think that's a good point, Commissioner Gillespie, in the fact that, I think that if you hold each one of us sitting here tonight, there's certain changes, there's little idiosyncrasies having to do with the budget, and that we would like change, but it's important for this board to come to some type of a consensus on how we agree that the financial proceedings in Macon County will move forward into the next year. I think that what we have before us is something that we can come to terms with. So, with that being said, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Let the record show a 5-0 unanimous vote. Great job, Mr. Manager.
Good job, Derek. Good job, Derek.
Thank you all for coming into attendance. Item 4A, which was per Commissioner Gillespie, an additional $300,000 for Fund '46 to support information technology for our schools. Any further questions on that? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion when we proceed with that. Fund '46.
Fund '46 to transfer $300,000. I'll shake your motion.
You just approved the capital project.
Yes.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record show a 5-0 unanimous vote.
Thanks, Mr. Gillespie.
Congratulations. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on.
Good luck.
Thank you all. South Macon Elementary School, Finance Director, against Item A, resolution approving financing terms.
Yes, in the packet that Derek laid out for you, it's the item right past the budget This resolution just says that we can move forward with the Taker Bank 3.35%.
Hold on just a minute.
It's just a one-page resolution approving financing terms. Okay. So, I said this just authorizes GM, Derek, et cetera, to move forward with the loan closing. Says we can take our bank an amount not to exceed $2,926.74. Interest rate 3.35%. Financing term not exceed 15 years from closing. So, we just need to have this approved, please.
Okay. Before we step into it, Mr. Manager, I think we just... Sorry, go ahead. No. I think there was a question that arose earlier today, potentially about something from the state for school funding. Is there anything we might need to be aware of with this?
Yes. The state did set aside $100,000 for capital projects, Tier One and Tier... Or 100 million for Tier One and Tier Two counties that would be given on a grant basis. Do you have any more information on that at this time, Dr. Baldwin? I haven't. That's all I've heard, is just a summary of what it was. I don't know if this is something we can do on a reimbursement basis, get a grant. So, we'll... Dr. Baldwin and myself will definitely be...
Can you get my head straight around it? We're almost between a rock and a hard spot here, because we need to move forward with this, get this ball rolling, get this school... Add an on to, but at the same time, it sounds like they're putting some money in there.
Let me just see what I know about that. It was 100 million. That was the number, right? For Tier... Both Tier One and Tier Two combined, that's 80 counties. That's 80 counties. And they'll take those 80 counties, and they'll parent them down in need. And as you know, we've never had much success on that. So, I wouldn't let that... You might get $28.40, so I wouldn't let that... But 80 counties, and you start parenting even the Tier Two counties. We're almost a Tier Two anyway. We're right at the... You know, there's always going to be 40 Tier One and 40 Tier Two counties, always. There's never... And 20 Tier Three counties. That's never going to change. They're going to shift back and forth. And the only reason we're a Tier Two... Tier One now is the property value, and that's what dropped during the recession. So, but you take 100 million divided by 80 counties in the need, and they look at the ... Look at their tax rate. We're going to... And they got a formula they go by. Our success rate's not been... You know, we did get some QSAB and some of that money, but this is a totally different thing. So, I wouldn't let that be a determinant unless us moving on, Mr. Manager. I just... I'm just... Some questions we asked today, so that's just the reality of it all.
Let's continue. Another comment, okay. It looks like the amount financially exceeded 2.923, 0.674 million, and shall not exceed 3.35% in 15 years. Can we get a motion to approve the resolution, approving financing terms?
I have my resolution. I have my proposal.
Can we get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Shields, we got a second, please.
I need to recuse myself here.
All right. Commissioner Bill's has to be recused. Commissioner Gillespie. Commissioner Higdon. All right, we've got a second. Any further discussion?
Father Accusel.
Father Accusel, his question was asked.
He's on the board.
I said on the board. And the board approved it.
Sorry, Commissioner Gillespie interrupted. Did you go ahead?
I am absolutely 100% for this addition. I have reservations about financing this and not paying that fund balance, and my vote would be consistent with what I've...
Okay. I understand. All right. So, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let the record... Let the record state that Commissioner Bill recused himself, and the resolution approving financing terms passed three to one. Commissioner Gillespie didn't abstain. She had a nay vote. So, okay, I'm with you. No, you have stayed consistent with that. All right, next item.
We do.
Awarding of the bid subject to LGC, approval of the loan and loan closing.
We actually need to insert an item before that, if that's okay.
Okay.
Because before, we're going to work bid, and I've got money appropriated. So, after the resolution in your packet, there should be a handout that says construction at the top.
Got it.
And then, right behind that is a capital project ordinance for South Macon. You're all there?
Got it.
Okay. So, and then, behind that, of course, is the actual bid tab that Novus Architects prepared. So, the school board that goes through the order, and they recommended Brantley Construction, which you'll see on the bid tab. They recommended the base bid plus alternates 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, and 9. The base bid is $2,255,000. Alternate 2 is $26,000. Alternate 3 is $145,000. Alternate 4 is $155,000. Alternate 5 is $185,000. Alternate 8 is no cost. Alternate 9 is $88,000. You add all those up, and it's $2,854,000. So, that's what the school board recommended yesterday to award it to Brantley Construction with those items I just named.
We would like to... We'll pass this out for... You all have a copy?
It's in your packet.
It's amazing how close the bids are.
Yeah, they're very close. So, the other handout that I mentioned that says construction at the top of the page...
Yes.
If you pull out middle ways down through there, you'll see I pulled out just the construction plus contingency, which is $2,629,352. So, of course, right off the bat, you can see that we're short, because the recommended bid is $2,854. I recommend that we don't go into a construction project with zero contingency. So, I recommend at least 5%, which is $142,700. So, that totals $2,996,700, which leaves a shortfall of $367,348. Well, earlier, we were talking about the Fund '46. That has $848,000. Where did she go? Lost it. Anyway, it has $848,000.
Is that before the 300 or after?
Well, it was before the 300.
It was 800 and so forth.
Yeah.
At least $554,000 on Monday.
$848,742. So, we could take the $367,348 from it and also the $300,000, and still we left with roughly $181,000.
You did have four motions out of...
$181,342. So, my recommendation is if you approve this capital project ordinance for the South Macon addition, it lays out the construction budget I just mentioned, as well as 5% contingency, as well as the other budget items for furniture, architect fees, et cetera. And then, it, of course, appropriates the loan amount and the Fund '46 fund balance appropriation. So, the budget ordinance is a total of $3,291,022, with, again, $2,923,674 from the loan, $367,348 from Fund '46 fund balance appropriate.
We're going to leave that in Fund '46.
Yes. Yes.
Can we get a motion to approve the same?
Yes.
Got a motion, Commissioner Higdon.
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Where's Brantley Construction from? Where are they from?
Brantley.
Brantley, where are they from?
We've been...
I've never heard of them.
Novus has used them a few times.
Did you check them out? We need to award the bid to them.
Yeah, the next one.
Have a little bit of... Have a living knowledge of them. But what we know about them isn't positive.
Good. But the architect is very positive about them.
Novus?
Yes.
They knew them?
Yes. All right. So, we'll need a motion to approve the bid for Brantley Construction for $2,854,000.
Subject to local government permission of the loan, as well as successful loan closing.
Well said. Bit approved. Think bit approved. Bit approved.
Can we get a motion to approve? No moves, Cam. Motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
You down with us, Mr. Manager?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lori, for your work on that.
Good work, Lori. We're not done. I mean, we've still got stuff to do.
I would say...
No, you ain't got... You ain't got nowhere to go.
You got to play a ballgame or something.
Item 6, occupancy tax service contracts for the Franklin and Highlands Chambers of Commerce TDC commissions. I guess let's handle those. Well, they're basically the same. Is our attorney need to say anything about that?
Chester, do you have any comments you would like to provide on the... On these agreement, the service contracts with the Franklin and Highland, the area Chamber of Commerce?
This is Chester. Everything looks good to me.
Chester, you there? No, we can do whatever we want to.
What's the next one, Stowe?
These are pretty much... These are consistent with the agreements we approve every year. I know that with the Franklin Area Chamber of Commerce Agreement, we had noticed something in the way that we disperse funds to Nana Hala. It is different than it is listed in this agreement. Lori, what section is that in?
It's the Franklin Agreement. It's the bottom of Page 1, where it says further chamber shall receive from county a monthly amount not to exceed amount of occupancy tax, et cetera, et cetera. The way that's currently handled is the Nana Hala occupancy tax is held by the county. And we hold it in a liability account on our balance sheet, because it's not the county's money. It belongs to Nana Hala Tourism. And then, Linda Harburg at the Franklin Chamber, as she advertises in our state magazine, et cetera, and they promote Nana Hala, she sends in invoices, and then I pay those invoices out of that money that's sitting on our balance sheet. So, the way this is worded, you know, it presumes that we send that money to them monthly, which is not the case.
So, that would just need to be changed to reflect our current procedure. So, if we...
So, you just want to hold that?
If we could... Well, it needs to be in place by July 1. So, if we could approve this contract, this contract subject to the changes as presented by the finance officer, we could go ahead and get that executed and in place for July 1.
Can we get a motion for that?
I like we both know that. We sat down on this, layers on to this, and we talked about this today. And I'd like that change to happen pending.
Okay. Got a motion to approve the service contract? We got a second. Got a second, Commissioner Gillespie. All in favor?
Aye.
That was the Franklin, Nana Hala one. This one, the second one, will be for the Highlands.
Discussion on that Nana Hala. You said, does she pay for ads that's specific to the target, Nana Hala?
Yes.
So, it's split out. Okay.
We got a motion to approve the Highlands service contract.
Any changes to it, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Well, Shields, you are good. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other business, Mr. Manager?